I just will correct you on the one thing, Minister Scow is the interim minister of municipal affairs.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Counselor Blackmore.
I'm curious when you talk to the ministers of infrastructure and justice if they had identified a location for a new courthouse.
Ms. Pinnick, you can take that or I can take that. Go ahead.
Through the chair, they hadn't identified a specific site, although there was discussion around site and also not just new builds, but looking at expansions or vertical builds as well.
I'm just thinking of the tunnel that connects CRCMP to courthouse and wondering what changes that will mean for us. And I, just as a matter of note, Guy Bois was pleased to announce on national media today that we don't need any more pipelines. I don't know why he has an opinion, but it just worries me that that indicates the direction that the federal government is going, not that we can affect that.
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Ms. Pinnick, you'd mentioned we've hired a firm around electricity distribution. Do we have other Northern Alberta or other partners around the province helping us with that or involved with that?
Ms. Pinnick.
Through the chair, we will be working with that group to look at coordinating with other Northern Mayors and Reeves on that particular topic. Right now, what they're doing is developing a bit of a strategy for us to dig into and understand what that will look like over the next couple of months between now and the fall.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any timelines on that?
Ms. Pinnick.
Through the chair, the goal is to have something to counsel by the next CCW in June.
Wonderful, thank you.
Counselor Russi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I did lose Wi-Fi for a minute, so my apologies if I just missed this, but what's the status of resolutions we're planning to bring to Alberta municipalities in the fall?
Ms. Pinnick.
Through the chair, we are working on updating those resolutions and will be trying to connect with some colleagues in other mid-sized cities to get the support piece before the June 30th timeline where it has to be in Alberta municipalities. So they're in the works.
Great, and if we need help finding tech nerds, I'm certainly happy to help with that.
Moving on to item 3.2, the grant update. Who is updating on that? Ms. Pinnick.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Since the last CCW update on grants, we've had a couple of successful grants to share with council. The Canada Summer Jobs Grant for 15 seasonal youth positions at $31,500, we were successful in. We got a grant from Travel Alberta through the Tourism Investment Program for $30,000 for the Grand North Winter Festival. Through Tree Canada, we received $10,000 to create tree groves at the community knowledge campus. We've also received $25,000 through the Canadian Heritage Celebrate Canada Grant for the annual National Indigenous Peoples' Day and the Canada Day celebrations in partnership with GPRTA, GPFC, and some other groups. And we also were successful for the NRED Northern Regional and Development Funding through the Government of Alberta for $40,000 for some work on strategic planning and economic development potential of the airport. We do still have three of the five federal grants that we had outstanding at the last update that we're still waiting on, hoping to hear on that now that we have a new government in place. And we had one grant that we were unsuccessful for but are working on reapplication. That was through the Government of Alberta Indigenous Relations Community Support Fund. We were looking for over half a million dollars to hire an Indigenous Relations Advisor, develop an Indigenous Advisory Board for GPPS, and provide cultural awareness and trauma training through the police. So that application is being reviewed and reworked on. We have a couple of ongoing applications. We have three applications into the provincial Supporting Psychological Health First for first responders. There is $1.5 million available in that pot for the 2025-2026 year. So there are three applications looking at GPFD wellness, fitness initiatives, some first responder family resilience seminars, and some peer support programming. And then the Community Support Fund application going in and being revised. The other thing on the grants front that we are continuing to monitor is the Provincial Priorities Act and the ones that need to be sent in for approval. We have sent one in for awareness. It didn't require approval and we've heard from other municipalities that turnaround time is somewhere between five and seven business days on those. So the ones that do require minister or cabinet approval may take longer than that, but we're just not sure yet. We haven't had anything go forward. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for the update on the reports and the grants there, Ms. Pinnick. Just a question, you mentioned there's three federal grants that we're waiting for on the federal government to sit in-house. What are those three federal grants that we're waiting on?
Through the chair, just give me one minute. My apologies. I'll have to follow up with council on that after, if that's possible.
Yeah, just a point of curiosity. I have one more question on a different subject. You did mention that the GPPS has identified that they need an Indigenous liaison coordinator or worker. I know that the city hired one. We have Warren who does all that. Is the workload too great to go across GPPS or and the city of Grand Prairie? Are we looking for individual positions?
Warren has been assisting GPPS as they go through their work. This was for some specialized programming that they were looking at bringing forward on top of what we're doing, and it was the grant opportunity aligned. So that I don't know if this is, if they'll have to replace this if they don't have this grant, but it was an enhanced level of program they were looking at delivering.
Awesome, that's great. Thank you.
Counselor Blackmore.
I'm curious, when you talk to the ministers of infrastructure and justice, if they had identified a location for a new courthouse.
Ms. Pinnick, you can take that or I can take that. Go ahead.
Through the chair, they hadn't identified a specific site, although there was discussion around site and also not just new builds, but looking at expansions or vertical builds as well.
I'm just thinking of the tunnel that connects CRCMP to courthouse and wondering what changes that will mean for us. And I, just as a matter of note, Guy Bois was pleased to announce on national media today that we don't need any more pipelines. I don't know why he has an opinion, but it just worries me that that indicates the direction that the federal government is going, not that we can affect that.
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Ms. Pinnick, you'd mentioned we've hired a firm around electricity distribution. Do we have other Northern Alberta or other partners around the province helping us with that or involved with that?
Ms. Pinnick.
Through the chair, we will be working with that group to look at coordinating with other Northern Mayors and Reaves on that particular topic. Right now, what they're doing is developing a bit of a strategy for us to dig into and understand what that will look like over the next couple of months between now and the fall.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any timelines on that?
Ms. Pinnick.
Through the chair, the goal is to have something to counsel by the next CCW in June.
Wonderful, thank you.
Counselor Russi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I did lose Wi-Fi for a minute, so my apologies if I just missed this, but what's the status of resolutions we're planning to bring to Alberta municipalities in the fall?
Ms. Pinnick.
Through the chair, we are working on updating those resolutions and will be trying to connect with some colleagues in other mid-sized cities to get the support piece before the June 30th timeline where it has to be in Alberta municipalities. So they're in the works.
Great, and if we need help finding tech nerds, I'm certainly happy to help with that.
Moving on to item 3.2, the grant update. Who is updating on that? Ms. Pinnick.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Since the last CCW update on grants, we've had a couple of successful grants to share with council. The Canada Summer Jobs Grant for 15 seasonal youth positions at $31,500, we were successful in. We got a grant from Travel Alberta through the Tourism Investment Program for $30,000 for the Grand North Winter Festival. Through Tree Canada, we received $10,000 to create tree groves at the community knowledge campus. We've also received $25,000 through the Canadian Heritage Celebrate Canada Grant for the annual National Indigenous Peoples' Day and the Canada Day celebrations in partnership with GPRTA, GPFC, and some other groups. And we also were successful for the NRED Northern Regional and Development Funding through the Government of Alberta for $40,000 for some work on strategic planning and economic development potential of the airport. We do still have three of the five federal grants that we had outstanding at the last update that we're still waiting on, hoping to hear on that now that we have a new government in place. And we had one grant that we were unsuccessful for but are working on reapplication. That was through the Government of Alberta Indigenous Relations Community Support Fund. We were looking for over half a million dollars to hire an Indigenous Relations Advisor, develop an Indigenous Advisory Board for GPPS, and provide cultural awareness and trauma training through the police. So that application is being reviewed and reworked on. We have a couple of ongoing applications. We have three applications into the provincial Supporting Psychological Health First for first responders. There is $1.5 million available in that pot for the 2025-2026 year. So there are three applications looking at GPFD wellness, fitness initiatives, some first responder family resilience seminars, and some peer support programming. And then the Community Support Fund application going in and being revised. The other thing on the grants front that we are continuing to monitor is the Provincial Priorities Act and the ones that need to be sent in for approval. We have sent one in for awareness. It didn't require approval and we've heard from other municipalities that turnaround time is somewhere between five and seven business days on those. So the ones that do require minister or cabinet approval may take longer than that, but we're just not sure yet. We haven't had anything go forward. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for the update on the reports and the grants there, Ms. Pinnick. Just a question, you mentioned there's three federal grants that we're waiting for on the federal government to sit in-house. What are those three federal grants that we're waiting on?
Through the chair, just give me one minute. My apologies. I'll have to follow up with council on that after, if that's possible.
Yeah, just a point of curiosity. I have one more question on a different subject. You did mention that the GPPS has identified that they need an Indigenous liaison coordinator or worker. I know that the city hired one. We have Warren who does all that. Is the workload too great to go across GPPS or and the city of Grand Prairie? Are we looking for individual positions?
Warren has been assisting GPPS as they go through their work. This was for some specialized programming that they were looking at bringing forward on top of what we're doing, and it was the grant opportunity aligned. So that I don't know if this is, if they'll have to replace this if they don't have this grant, but it was an enhanced level of program they were looking at delivering.
Awesome, that's great. Thank you.
Counselor Blackmore.
I'm curious to know more information on the grant that we received for the airport.
Ms. Pinnick.
All right, through the chair. Specific information, like what's it for?
I'll get Mr. Burke to take it.
That grant was for some consultant work that's already been concluded. The grant allowed us to be retroactive to a certain date, so we've already.
So that report will be coming back to council here within less than a month.
Okay, thanks.
All right, moving on to item 3.3, Business Improvement Area. And this one, I am going to turn over to Ms. Whiteway for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So at the request of council, Mr. Scott Smith, our Director of Tax and Assessment, will just be giving some information in terms of the downtown business improvement area.
Thanks. Welcome, Mr. Smith.
So thank you, Mayor Clayton. So before you today is information that was requested in regards to the BIAs in other municipalities and what it may look like if our BIA was dissolved. So I'm assuming that you've all read the report, so I'll just kind of go through it at a higher level. The city's BIA was established in 1983 to promote and help businesses in downtown area. And as you know, annually, we collect and levy the BIA tax on behalf of the Downtown Association. This year's requisition that was just passed recently was $302,500. So other than Grand Prairie, BIAs of course exist, Edmonton, Calgary, Lethbridge, Red Deer, Spruce Grove, and St. Albert. All the BIAs that we found seem to function in a similar fashion to ours, but for just council's information, just recently, Red Deer's council has passed a motion asking that city administration outline the steps to disestablish their BIA and look at different options and funding to support the greater downtown area. Report is expected back to Red Deer's council later this summer. Recently, in the past few years, Medicine Hat and Camrose BIAs both dissolved. Both Medicine Hat and Camrose provided us some comments in regards to their BIAs disestablishment. The overall theme between the two municipalities was that not much had changed in the area where the BIAs were located, but municipalities did have some new expenses that they had to absorb into their operating budgets. Just speaking quickly to disestablishment, so a BIA can be dissolved in two ways. One way would be a petition from the businesses, and the other would be by council itself, its own initiative, or at the request of the BIA board. If either way, disestablishment occurs, a vote would of course have to be held where the businesses would vote to dissolve or not. With that, Mayor Clayton, I think that summarizes everything. Be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks for that report. Recognizing Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So, Mr. Smith, in your summary, it says those municipalities that have seen a BIA disestablishment have had to take on some additional costs. With any of those communities that have dissolved their BIA, have they tried to recoup any of that through a tax or with a disestablishment of the BIA, all of those businesses just no longer pay that extra fee?
Through Mayor Clayton, thanks. No, there's been no additional tax, so essentially it's through city budget that they would have to pick up those additional costs.
Okay, thank you. I do have one more question, but not related.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you very much for the report. I know, sorry, I noticed that Camrose and Medicine Hat took them out and dissolved them, but there was some extra costs that the city took in regards to flowers and upkeep. Did you get any idea of what percentage of cost that went to the city?
Mr. Smith.
In regards to those two municipalities, no, but I think I do have the Downtown Association's budget here in front of us. So for beautification, our Downtown Association spends approximately, well, it says $49,000 here in their budget, so that would be an amount you could be looking at.
So that, so that would probably end up coming to the general taxpayer, and that we would still, I think we would still want to do that, would we not? And if they dissolve.
That would be a council's decision.
Oh, oh, put me out of the box.
I think I'm going to recognize Counselor Plot next, because I know he's traveling, and he did have a similar vein, on a similar vein, a comment. So I recognize Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I guess my question is, I mean, I appreciate the report, and I'm glad that we showed some folks that were wondering what the options would look like to give the community those options, but I'm just, I guess to disconnect, I have is the beautification side. So I'm just wondering if we chose to go in-house with that, so the city would look after beautification, do I understand we would just requisition less money from the BIA members then? I guess that's my question for a minute.
So like, Counselor Plot's, assuming the structure still exists, remove beautification from the current model, and then parks were to take on that operation, what would that look like? Would we just requisition less overall?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, so less requisition, taking on hypothetically the $49,000 that they've had in their budget would mean an increase to our operational expenses of $49,000.
Counselor Plot, did you have a follow-up?
I did, and I just, I'm curious, I guess, from being on the BIA for a few years, there's lots of conversations back and forth about getting, working, and you know, I think Ms. Bosch did a great job of that over the years, trying to work with our administration to get requests for beautifications and flower baths and things. And so I'm just wondering if we were running it, does administration see some opportunities to have less administration involvement? I feel like we're kind of doing a lot of this already, or would it be extra work for staff if we were to take it over outside of the 15?
So, he's out of range, but Counselor Plot had called me prior to lunch and suggested...
Or to keep being less burdened.
Sorry, go ahead, Counselor Plot. You cut out there for a minute, go ahead.
Sorry, my apologies. I'm just curious if there was a way, I've heard through, I guess, Ms. Bosch and then our administration, there's a lot of overlaps, it seems like sometimes, of the beautification of downtown. And I'm just wondering from administration's perspective, if our administration looked after all beautification downtown, would that streamline the process to make sure that, really, that, at the end of the day, we want a beautiful downtown? And so I'm just curious, on administration's perspective, would that streamline anything in the process if it was looked after by our staff?
Yeah, I'm going to go to Chief Glavin and ask if there's any efficiencies to be realized, to your knowledge, if integration of the beautification from downtown was in a regular parks programming and operations.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. We'd have to get probably a little bit more information internally, but like, right now, they plant for, or they pay for all the plants that go into, the planters that go into downtown. After that, the city cares for them, waters them, ensures, or tries their best to ensure they last for the summer. I'm not sure what, off the top of my head, what else we'd be absorbing from them outside of that, as far as the beautification from a plant perspective would go. Aside from that, you know, we're doing street sweeping downtown ahead of events, and he...
So the $49,000 is purely for acquisition of, requisitioning of plants, of purchasing the plants, the baskets that they buy?
Yeah, so in that case, there's potential that we could get better pricing perhaps with our bulk orders when we do them, but as far as efficiency, if they're doing the planting and we're just doing the watering, there's probably not additional efficiencies in that particular work. But like I said, it would be worthwhile us doing a bit more work between us and the downtown, just to ensure that we've captured all the activities.
Counselor Plot, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I guess, like, because I was cutting in and out, I guess for me, I was, maybe look for some business arising, that maybe we do ask it men to see what that would look like if, my appetite is really just to see what it would look like if the city was looking after the beautification side of it.
Okay. I have others in the queues, so I'll come back to you in case what you're expecting for business arising isn't captured from some of your colleagues. Recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
One of my questions did, was around beautification and what the city already does spend on downtown, because it is an additional amount. But what I'm really curious about regarding those businesses that are, those towns and communities that have dissolved their BIA is, I feel our downtown is quite vibrant, and I certainly know that Medicine Hat's downtown was quite vibrant. So I'm wondering if, since the dissolution of their downtown association, if they've noticed any drop or decline in that community, that downtown community? Or if you asked them that?
In your exploration, were you able to determine, was it the same amount spent and just taken over by the city? Was there a change in ownership or operations? Did you have that sort of detail?
If I can, Mayor Clayton, essentially, the feedback we got is that residents couldn't really tell a difference. It seemed to function the same way, yes.
Do you know if the same amount was being done, I guess?
It's hard to say, because each municipality can customize what they want to do in regards. Maybe they did a little more, a little less, I can't speak to that. Overall, the feedback we got is very little had changed.
The only thing that I could see being significantly different is the amount of marketing, and I'm not sure that marketing is that effective when you don't get total buy-in from the street anyway. I'd just, I'd just be curious where we go from here.
Yeah, let's get to that conversation. I'll recognize my other colleagues that have questions. Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you. Not about dissolving the BIA, but my question, I guess, is to the opposite. What happens if, after all this, maybe council and the downtown wanted to expand its borders, like, maybe go closer to the Polytech? How would council go about doing that?
Mr. Smith.
Through Mayor Clayton. Legal counsel is online, so, Mr. Freeman, if I do answer this possibly, a little incorrect, please correct me, but I do believe a vote would have to go out to the membership to expand and approve. That's why essentially, the original boundaries are still in place today from 1983, is because there's, I guess, a risk, let's put it that way, when you do put it to a vote, that it could come back as no end to dissolve it. Because I would believe you'd have to dissolve the original and then have a new boundary approved.
I'm actually going to ask Chief Glavin on this. I see Mr. Freeman nodding, but to Counselor Thiessen's comment, not about dissolving, but if we wanted to expand our CC district, that's a rezoning piece that council could make a decision on, correct?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. That would be a council decision for the Landesby Law that we could expand CC zoning. I don't know that necessarily you have to change the zoning to expand the downtown association. You could have multiple zonings within it.
Mr. Freeman, did you have anything to add?
No, not really. I think it's an interesting question, probably would require a little bit more work. Perhaps, perhaps the comment was correct, that it would require first disestablishing this BIA to create a larger one, but we'd have to take that away.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Thiessen? Okay. Recognizing Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. One point around beautification, it's not just the flowers in the summer, but over the last few years, there's been Christmas trees and Christmas boxes put out around Christmas just for year-round beautification. So my question that I wanted to circle back to is, from what I understand, the executive director position may still be open, I'm not sure. I haven't heard any news that they've hired somebody, other than they're going through the process.
Last, I spoke to the former CEO and the former chair. They had shortlisted to two people, and they were continuing with interviews.
Okay, perfect, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, so, one of my colleagues asked where we go next. Obviously, this report is in your package for information. I think that there's still exploratory work that could be done if council has an interest. My suggestion would be, this is great conversations with some of the members of the BIA to see where the members are. Until we get a new executive director in that position, there's not really a main point to contact, so maybe council wants to continue to have questions. I know Counselor Plot, though, did have some business that he was hoping to cover. So I'll recognize Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I guess, one of the things that this was brought to my attention for, and the reason I'm wanting to explore this, was that I had a lot of office tenants approach me and say that they just did not see the value in this, and that's where this conversation, for me, started anyways. So I'm wondering, would administration know the breakdown of revenues collected that would be office tenants versus on-street tenants or retail commercial tenants?
Ms. Whiteway? Or Mr. Smith, one of you?
Through Mayor Clayton, unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me. I wasn't prepared for it.
You would be able to send that to council for information?
Yeah, we could probably find that out.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Plot.
So I don't need to make a formal motion, that'll come to us. And then I'm just also wondering, Mayor Clayton, if I should be making a formal motion around more information coming back about what it would look like if just beautification was taken over by the city as far as costs, and then what it would potentially do to impact the BIA? And my thinking is, is for the BIA, if it was another thing that they didn't have to manage internally, that might give that, their association either more time to put energy into marketing and other events, or maybe not have to hire an FTE, more of a three-quarter FTE on that?
Yeah, I'll defer to Mr. Burke. I guess my high-level comments would be, it's sort of, it depends. It depends if council wants status quo with existing beautification at Christmas, existing planters, existing work that's done, or if council wanted modified, that would obviously be a modified price. The work that Parks is already doing to support with watering wouldn't change. So it would depend, it would depend on what council is looking to see for beautification, but I'll hand it over to Mr. Burke if there's some additional contacts.
Just trying to think what would be useful for council. We have already provided the 2025 money, so that process is still, is still continuing. We could bring back, just, I don't think it would be a full report, but just verifying some information on, if we were to take this on, what that looked like, including just better understanding of maybe some of the winter things. So I would turn it over to Mr. Glavin if he has other comments, but I don't think it's a full report. I think there's some further information if there was this motion.
Chief Glavin.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I think, yeah, it would come down to where beautification, what we currently define as beautification, so right now, we have the vegetative and non-vegetative. So anything that's vegetative right now, to my knowledge, the city manages aside, and that includes what's purchased by the DTA. So right now, there's the purchasing of it. Then there's what the DTA does for programming and beautification, they put out the Christmas boxes, trees, and some other seasonal items. The city already does the Christmas lights that go up after Remembrance Day, that is purely on the city side. But yeah, I think it's just a matter of looking at, what do we define as beautification that we'd be considering here, and then figuring out who does what currently. But I think we have a pretty good idea already.
So, do you, Ms. Chief Glavin, would you like, would you like a motion to direct administration, or is this something you can send out to council by email? What's your preference here?
Yeah, I think we're okay to send it out via email, we'll just have to get in contact with the DTA.
Okay. So Counselor Plot, before I go to you, Counselor Bressey, Counselor Plot, I think there will be some information coming from, you know, various items that you just addressed, that could in turn lead to future direction from council for other initiatives. Does that satisfy what you were hoping to achieve?
Yeah, that works for me. Thank you, Mayor Clayton, thanks, administration.
Okay, Counselor Bressey.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I know as we talk about this, if the BIA dissolved, I'd be okay, just letting whatever happens, happens with most of the events. If businesses pick them up, great, if they don't, oh, well. But the one event that is an exception for me is the Christmas tree lighting, since that is such a prominent event for a city facility. I think that's something that I would want us continue to have a hand in. But I am curious, the Christmas tree itself, not even the event associated with it, but the Christmas tree itself, is that something that we take the costs on, or the association takes costs on? And if there's not an answer today, I'm fine with that coming back with us, but that's just something else I'm curious about.
Well, we happen to have the perfect person here today to answer that, so I'll go to Ms. Ridgeway.
Thank you, through the chair. The purchase of the tree was a joint venture between the Downtown Association and the city. The city has taken on all the costs of storing the tree and assembling it and all of the power.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Just a comment on that, I think most of those events are actually shared between the city and the Downtown Association already, so it's not, it's not something we wouldn't be familiar with. But my real point is, from my point of view, this needs to be driven by the BIA itself. That's, I don't feel that direction from council is appropriate in this instant, so we need to figure out how to share the information with them without indicating a preference one way or the other. And I don't really know how you would do that, but that's where I would want to go.
Once we have an executive director that, who is our current council rep on BIA?
Wade.
So, next time they have a proper meeting, maybe Wade and our CAO go to that meeting and sort of broach this, you know, address this conversation that was here today.
I'm not sure that it would be in the interest of the BIA board and brand-new executive director to share... director to share that information with their membership. I mean, if you just got hired, do you really want to get unhired?
Yeah. Well, and I don't, depends, there's two different conversations going here today, right? One's removing beautification. One part of the conversation was dissolving the BIA. So it depends on where that council goes, or that conversation goes. But I absolutely agree that this conversation needs to happen with the membership as a whole. The 2025 monies have already been put forward, so maybe there's a midterm to the AGM conversation that needs to happen between council and the entire membership. Recognizing Councilor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just on this conversation, I think the beautification is a good eye-opener. There's overlaps in this, and I guess that's my exercise, what I'd like to find out. So I'm just wondering if administration, when they're sending out that email or whatever report they're going to send us, could you let us know all the things you're doing already downtown to support it, with the different events that you're part of? I guess that would be nice to know how much we're already supporting the downtown with other things as well, but just, I am curious of how many things we're doing besides the pots, which it sounds like the BIA looks after. I'd be curious to see how much we're supporting the downtown core with different beautification already.
I got a nod from Chief Glavine that he will include that information in the email that will be shared to council.
Thank you.
Yep. Councilor Tool.
Thank you. I know we touched on it a little bit in this conversation today, but maybe there's an opportunity to expand the downtown beautification? So I wonder what the process would be that? Would that be going to their?
Well, I think a perfect time for that conversation will be when administration brings forward back the community enhancement report, and council could have some input into other areas of potential beautification and enhancement. Mr. Burke, when do you expect that report recall? Remind me when that report's coming back to council.
Before the end of June. I don't have a more precise timeline, but we still want to have an opportunity to complete some of those if council approves activities this year. So before the end of June, I don't know if Chief Glavine has a more precise timeline, but end of June.
Councilor Tool, so at that time, when administration comes forward with some ideas, maybe if there's interest from you and your colleagues to identify additional beautification in certain areas of the community?
Just wanted to put a positive spin on this today. Maybe people want to get involved, and maybe other businesses along Claremont Road going north on the west side. I know there's lots of businesses there that they may want to take part. Anyhow, thank you for the answers.
Councilor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you. I think I really look forward to the report that's coming back. This is really just statement, I have no extra questions, but I do find it very valuable for the BIA and all our local downtown businesses, and I do stress the local part, because most of our, if not all of our businesses in that downtown area are local businesses. They're small businesses, and, you know, a lot of times, they don't have the energy, the time, the capacity, or the money to start working, volunteering, or organizing events. And I know how well of a job Ms. Bosch did in her position there as far as bringing a bit of Panache and style to the downtown, as did Helen Rice before her. I don't think we received more complaints about counseling event than we have since the Downtown Association decided they didn't want to do the Santa Claus parade anymore. So these are, these small events, although they seem small, or a little bit, takes a lot of work to organize and put together, and it's all in support of our local businesses. So I'll be reviewing the report as it comes forward under that lens, and hopefully maintaining a good prestigious downtown location that's supported for all of our local businesses. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilor Thiessen. So I would like a motion as recommended or something else from this report. Councilor Burke.
All right. Wasn't prepared to advance anything, so I will move simply to, for committee to receive this report for information, knowing that more information is coming.
Thanks. That motion is in order, so I'll call the question on that.
Councilor Thiessen in favor?
Councilor O'Connor in favor?
Councilor Bressi? Oh, we have your vote. My apologies. Councilor Plot?
Councilor Plot in favor?
Thanks, Councilor Plot. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item 3.4, the 2024 to 2025 winter operations review, and I'll turn this over to Chief Glavine for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Council directed administration to bring several items related to snow removal back for discussion. To help frame the discussion, Mr. Nellis is going to provide a review of this past snow season, as well as an analysis of the issues that were requested, and with that, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Nellis.
Perfect. Welcome, Mr. Nellis.
Good afternoon, through the chair. This is a report overseeing or reviewing the operations of our snow removal crews in 2024 and 2025. Little bit of background here as far as our snowfall statistics during this season. We, it was returned to form to our regular snow volumes. We saw 160.1 centimeters of snow in the 2024-2025 snow season, which was reapproaching our 25-year average of 168 centimeters, but was considerably higher than the 59 in 97 that we, or 98 centimeters that we'd seen in the previous two years. We were presented with some operational challenges with the patterning of that snowfall. As you can see in the graph in the bottom of the, just below table one, most of our snowfall was front-loaded into November and December, and then tailed off through the tail half of the season. However, that did present us with the challenges. Our storage areas were filled quickly and required considerable effort afterwards to get them cleared out. City snow removal teams consist of 60 full-time staff that work over three shifts 24 hours a day, and on weekends, there are ice control crews running on Saturday and Sunday, and we bolster those crews with overtime shifts if necessary according to conditions. Contract services are a large part of our operation. As you can see in table two, we had over 4,700 hours of grader and loader contract time, 2,830 hours of contract trucking, and over 600 hours of dozer time, which is utilized to keep our snow dump running and prepared to take in snow from across the city. Moving on to our service level performance, table three summarizes the service levels for priority roads that are present in policy 606. One word before we get into the table itself on resets. So basically, when we commence snow removal service, we start with our priority one roads. 24 hours after that, we were into priority twos. So if during that process, we receive enough snow that for safety reasons, we need to return to the higher-volume priority one streets, it basically resets our service levels, and we commence again from that point. So moving on to table four, you can see that in event one, we hit three of three service levels because on November 23rd, we got another 11 centimeters of snow, and we're forced to return back to priority one. So in November, we were reset twice. That event concluded with event number three, where we hit four out of five service levels there, and windrowing priority two and priority three streets took an additional two days. The fourth snow event, we had quite a break after that, or, you know, consistently low snowfall volumes. So event number four in March of 2025 was completed on time, and warm temperatures basically kept us from having to complete the entire rotation. Moving on to residential service. So residential service was initiated four times during the 2024-2025 season. A little bit of background, during the budget process of 2024, for the 2025 budget, a decision was made to revise the service level from a 13-centimeter residential trigger, or, I'm sorry, from a 10-centimeter residential trigger to a 13-centimeter residential trigger, anticipating three rather than four complete rounds of residential snow removal. We did complete four rounds this year. Rotations one and two were back-to-back November and December. We faced some difficult conditions there with freezing rain December 6th to 8th. Rotation number three was ordered directly by council in response to the mid-season melt. And rotation number four was commenced in mid-March due to just over 10 centimeters of snow, and that rotation was completed early in only six days. Responding to one of the issues that came up during the discussion earlier this season around mid-season melts and residential ice, right now, the trigger that's prescribed in policy 606 has very little room for interpretation. So it's a straight centimeter trigger, and the Transportation Department faithfully implemented that throughout the season. However, and as Councilor Blackmore rightly pointed out, it's not a surprise, and we frequently see these mid-season melting events. So council could look at adopting or possibly broadening the trigger to incorporate some discretionary triggers or some discretionary authorizations, so that if we do have favorable conditions and are able to move in and eliminate some of that rutting in residential streets during prolonged melting cycles, that we would have the flexibility to do so. As far as citizen inquiries go, citizens contacted the city about 2,788 times between November 1st and March 31st. 2,200 of these were resolved by our great staff at the 311 call center. 581 were converted into service requests for transportation. As you can see in table six, the bulk of those calls is related to residential snow removal, and a lot of those would be around blocked driveways, cul-de-sac piles, and damaged claims. All of these calls are logged, and access GP communicates from the field staff back to the citizen. One type of concern in particular is pile removal. So there are over 400 sites throughout the city where we store snow in cul-de-sacs as we complete the residential program. Now, we realize there's a high volume of calls, and that these are an inconvenience for citizens. However, our typical response to these is that we have an ongoing program that does remove these piles as resources allow, once we complete our priority snow removal activities. So while we can't frequently relate to citizens that will be there immediately to address their concern, we do communicate to them that there's an ongoing program to remove those piles, and as soon as we can, we'll be in those neighborhoods to remove those. Potholes, so it was another challenging season for potholes. The aforementioned mid-season melting events do create challenging conditions. We received 328 pothole reports between November 24th and May 2025, which have all been addressed. Supervisors triage these calls, but during periods of warm weather, we have wet road conditions, and especially through late February this year, we had conditions where it was very warm during the day and was freezing every night, so we're seeing multiple freeze-thaw cycles where, you know, even when we would address a pothole, dry it out, oil it, compact the, do a proper repair, we would frequently see these things popped out by the next day, and we're having to do a lot of remedial work to just keep the roads together. However, looking at the trends for the entire year, once we move into drier weather, we see pothole complaints drop off precipitously as we return, and we're able to make more permanent repairs and more favorable conditions. We do get some questions throughout the season as to what our snow removal crews are doing between snowfalls, and I can assure you that we have no shortage of work to do, especially this year, where we had a front-loaded snow season. We spend a lot of time pulling snow off of boulevards, pulling snow off of center islands, hauling cul-de-sac piles, moving snow out of residential areas with dual sidewalks, making sure that we're prepared for any snowfalls that may come afterwards. If you'll take a look, if you've taken a look at appendix A, there's an indication there of how the finite resources within a transportation crew are allocated depending on the current conditions. So during a snow removal event, we'll be almost exclusively working on priority snow removal, but as we get into prolonged melting events and prolonged unseasonal weather, we'll have to distribute some of those resources to flood mitigation, to potholing, and to various other activities. As far as the budget implications, late 2024 season required extensive contract resources, but we had a light snowfall earlier in the calendar year, so we still realized a surplus of $1.5 million in 2024. At the conclusion of our 2024-25 season, 2.1 million of the 5.3 million for the calendar year of 2025 has been utilized. Contract services budget should be sufficient for the remainder of the season. However, an intense early season could potentially put us over our budgeted amount if we had to do multiple residential rounds. There are a couple of options presented here if council wished to explore some expansion of service levels at budget, one of those being a contracted removal of residential piles, which would basically be us allocating three trucks and a loader on a contract basis to run these things, so we can allocate resources elsewhere, and that we would have consistent action on this item rather than it being simply between our larger snow events. Estimated cost for that, based on current rates, would be around $7,100 per day, and a rough estimate of 40 days of work over the course of the season for $285,000. The other thing that we could consider is looking for contract pothole repair to just give us faster response when we do get these off-season melting events. However, this could be difficult to find a suitable contractor, as the work would be very intermittent, and it'd be tough to give a guarantee of the work that would be provided. So, in closing, the 2024-2025 season, we would consider a success. We hit our prescribed service level on priority roads in 12 of 13 instances. Residential snow clearing was completed within the two-week timeframe 75% of the time, and we'll be taking a look at that in the next season. Part of that can be attributed to the fact that we renewed those contracts last year. We had some new contractors. They are getting up to speed, but it is much more demanding work than people realize, and it can be very technical and very, very challenging. And before we wrap up, I did want to take just one moment to commend the staff that work on this file for the city. Back in November, they worked 28 out of 30 days straight with working 24 hours a day. The work is incredibly challenging, and one thing that I don't think people realize is that between those 60 staff, every time it snows, we send 591 years of experience out onto city streets, and they're professionals, and they're great at what they do, and we definitely appreciate them. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right. Thanks for that report, Mr. Nellis. I have a few questions. Recognizing Councilor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. And Wade, I want to compliment your department on the hard work they did. I got people complaining and saying, in December, saying, "Where are the guys? Why aren't they out?" And I'm saying, "They do get an opportunity to take holidays, just like you, so you've got to give them. They've been working days on days straight." So kudos to your department for doing that. One of the things I noticed, and I really appreciate your table number one in showing the amount of snow that was accumulated, I couldn't believe that we had over 110, 111 centimeters of snow in the first three months, so that caused a lot of challenges. Where I think when we got into January, February, and March, the snowfall was a lot less, but seemed almost consistent. So 18 centimeters, I think, in January, 12 in February, and another accumulation. And because of the weird winter that we had, there was a lot of freeze-thaw, like you mentioned, you know, it'd get warmer during the day and then freeze at night, and that caused a lot of challenges. I'm just wondering, in speaking to a former contractor, he says, "If you're going to try and remove ice that's been packed down, it's very hard on equipment." Would you concur with that? And then I'll have a follow-up question.
Through the chair, I would absolutely concur with that assessment. And just to give an example, we've had even the passes that we did at council's direction in February. By that time, that snowpack had melted, we were seeing a lot of rutting on residential roads. There were times where our equipment would need to make 10 or 12 passes on a street, rather than the three or four that we might need to make in a fresher snow condition. But however, during that intermediate period, we didn't hit the trigger to consider doing additional residential snow removal. I think it's also important to consider the commute in wider context as well. So while we certainly did see rutted conditions on residential streets during that particular period, especially in February, arterial roads and priority two roads were nearly clear. So most commutes were almost bare pavement for 90 to 95% of the journey, and we are looking at, you know, basically that last 100 to 300 yards of an average journey.
Yeah. And that brings up another point, and I'm wondering if we couldn't, not telling you how to do things, but look at a different approach in, from January to March, seeing as how most of our snow came in the first part, or the last part of 2024. I'm wondering if sending a round that would go through the neighborhoods quicker in January to reduce that ice pack, which caused the majority of the problems. And with that, also identify the areas that need the drains cleared out, because that's where we got a lot of flooding, a lot of skating rinks on a few streets. where we got a lot of flooding, a lot of skating rinks on a few streets and the ruttings. So I'm wondering, is there a different way we could approach that situation to not have that? Because some streets you couldn't even drive down. It would take you 10 minutes to drive down the street instead of two. So I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity for a different approach?
So before you answer that, Mr. Nellis, I just have a question for Chief Glavine. What are you hoping to expect to get out of the conversation today? Are you looking for council to have enough specific feedback that you're going to go away and potentially change the snow removal policy? What are you hoping to achieve today?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Essentially, right now, we are more or less meeting policy as it's currently written, aside from an exceptional circumstance of volume and having some new contractors that probably wouldn't have the same challenges this year, even with the same volumes of snow as they get to learn their residential routes. So for us, it is to receive the report for information. Currently, the policy is working, but there is, at the currently prescribed service level, the one area that isn't addressed in the policy is, as Mr. Nellis noted, is that midseason melt, is that we don't have the discretion currently under policy to issue a round of residential service. So if that's something that we would like to address at a policy level, that would be something for council direction, then we could amend the policy to provide that service.
And totally understand that the report today recognizes that policy was met. If council, though, wants to dig into changing policy, are you thinking we're doing that today? That's my question, sorry.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. No, we don't need to, this can be for discussion. If there's certain things you want more information on, or would like to see a draft of what a revised service could look like, we can bring that back at a future date.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Connor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. And I'm glad you brought that up, and I'm glad Mr. Nellis brought that up as well, that there is barely defined, and I think it's policy 606, that perhaps there should be a point where you say, hey, the conditions on the residential streets are not satisfactory to the level of people getting around our city. And that's why I'd like to see us take a look at that going forward, so that we do have some input without getting bossy and saying, hey, do this, do that.
So back to Mr. Nellis. Mr. Nellis, would you like to answer that question in regards to what possibly could change in regards to ice removal? Or would you rather council recommend or provide direction that you come back with a report?
I think I can end through the chair. I think I could respond to portions of both of that. Should council want to revise the trigger, we'd be happy to bring back a report with some suggested language about, around what that could look like. The challenge for us will be determining what that midseason criteria could look like. There will also be budget implications, as we're currently budgeted for three rounds, and adding this additional, you know, potential midseason round, we would probably require additional funding to come forward at budget if they wanted to retain similar service levels to what we have right now.
I'll get out.
Go ahead, Ms. Nellis.
And sorry, could you, I addressed the first part, and I think I forgot the second.
I think that's good for now, and we'll come back to, I have many people in the queue, so I'm sure it'll come up again. I recognize Councilor Plot next.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton, and I appreciate the report, Mr. Nellis, and have to say, I drive a lot of communities in the wintertime, and I'm proud of GP's roads at lots of the times. The two complaints we had, I think you addressed to report, and I guess for me, if it's going to come to budget this year to talk about pile removal, I'm happy with that. I think that's a great conversation for a new council to have to talk about snow removal right away. But I'm wondering if you, if men could also bring what the last five years of spending on snow removal and what the surplus or deficit was. And I guess for me, I'd love to see us change the policy here on the pile clearing, putting a timeline on it, five, 10 days, something to just give that trigger. I think that's been the bulk of the calls I've received as a council, is these areas flooding out, and a lot of people having safety issues and concerns. But I, I want to know that we could probably do within the budget we already have. I don't really want to have a surplus in snow removal, and I have just, I guess for me, I want to know what administration could show us that at budget. Long winded, is that something administration could supply at budget, or would I need to make a motion for something like that?
So Chief Glavine, I got a thumbs up that yes, he could produce a five-year report in regards to what was budgeted and what was spent. I'm going to come back to your comments, though, about deferring it to budget. I personally, and I'll defer to the CAO, think that this council, having implemented this policy, is better to make changes on this policy and defer the budget amount increase to the budget, rather than having a new council come in, amend a policy, and at the same time, deal with the budget. What is your preference?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Certainly value from council here, providing that policy direction. It will then be endorsed or not by the next council. Would also add that there was the change from 13 to 10. So there already has been one change, so that's been implemented. So if there's further changes, I think, just to recognize that there was one other change that has been through part of a cycle here this, in 2025.
Councilor Plot?
Yeah, I just, I'll hop back in the queue separately about potholes, but I just did have a question more about snow removal and logistics. Just wondering again if it's something where we look at a smaller scale, but I have a hard time seeing all these dry ponds in Royal Oaks and by the Charles Spencer and Whispering Ridge or Westlake, sitting there empty all winter long when we're driving trucks to one spot in the city. So I'm just, I'm wondering if we've looked at doing a smaller scale of what it would look like to have snow storage dumps at more strategical places around our city, rather than having to truck everything to one location and running a cat up and down the hill.
Mr. Nellis?
Thank you, through the chair. As much as I would love to have satellite dump sites throughout the city, you know, we're under strict environmental regulations with the, with the proper storage and disposal of snow, and that's why the snow dump that we have was so expensive to construct and has a number of ponds to precipitate the removal of salts before that water returns to the watershed.
Mr. Plot?
Okay, and I, just a question, I get it. I appreciate that's on a large scale. If we looked at what it would look like to build a berm and a paved area on a small corner of each one of these ponds, and just to see what it would cost to make a look, and I'm just, would like to start right on the business case on what long-term this is going to cost us. If we don't pivot at some point to have, trucking fees are not going to go anywhere but up over time, and just logistically, it just seems at some point we have to look at a second option.
If you've looked at it, great. If not, I'll ask council to come back with some direction.
Through the chair, we have not looked at that particular option.
Okay. Okay, so I'll get you to jump back in the queue, okay? Councilor Plot?
Thank you.
Yep, Councilor Berg?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. And thanks, Wade, for compliments to your staff, because I know how hard they were working. All of council knows how hard they were working. We're getting regular updates, and we're also getting regular phone calls from concerned citizens, and so we had to, you know, defend our administration and our crews, and we all did that. Where, what I would tell people, though, is council needs to change the policy around ice. And so that's, that's one of the things that I hope we can do this term, is change that ice policy, because that's, to me, where the real concern was, was that buildup of ice of three or four inches, it seemed, on every street. And it created, in my mind, some hazardous conditions that were quite rough on vehicles. So that's a council thing, and so I hope we can resolve that one way or another through your expertise. What I do want to comment on, and this is strictly speculation, so we all acknowledge that the ice was particularly bad this year, and the potholes were particularly bad this year. So that's freeze thaw. Did we find the streets that we cleared had less potholes than the ones that we left the ice on? So in other words, were the streets that we left ice on, were they more damaging to the roads? Because there could be a cost payoff there, too. By clearing off ice could potentially save the roads.
Mr. Nellis?
Thank you, through the chair. Interestingly enough, the conditions are almost the opposite. So we see more potholes on our arterial roads and see next to no potholes on those residential roads that would see the higher ice accumulation. Going back to your comments about ice, and we understand that it is an inconvenience, absolutely, and can be treacherous for people to drive on. However, I would attempt to temper council's expectations around how thorough and complete ice removal can be. We've tried a couple of rotations. You may remember in 2021, we had another ordered rotation due in cold temperatures with extreme ice buildup, and the results were mixed. Yeah, it, you know, was an exercise that definitely made some improvements, but as far as getting that down to bare pavement is an extremely difficult, time-consuming process, it's very hard on equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Bressey?
Great, thank you, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I do agree with what you were saying, Mayor Clayton, about this council should just, this council should make policy changes we see as needed, and then the next council, I guess they can take out of the budget if they want, but I think we should make those changes in the next month or two, so their in policy and staff can be getting planning for the next season with them in mind. I do have some appetite to look at snow pile removals, but two questions about them. Number one, I noticed that the report says that there's a high priority of removing piles when they're blocking something like a garbage truck, which I really respect and appreciate. But I also got a number of phone calls this year about residents who were noticing piles between where, where water was pooling and a storm drain, and wondering how those get treated in the prioritization.
Mr. Nellis?
Thank you, through the chair. In the midst of the winter, when we're looking at consistent low temperatures, we do very little with those, as, of course, there's no flowing water, and we're not dealing with things damming up. However, as soon as we start getting melting conditions, and as you can see in the appendix of this report, we start allocating people to our hydrovac truck and to our water trucks to make sure that we're clearing drains and we're addressing drainage as quickly as possible. So we definitely do allocate resources to the exact thing that you've mentioned throughout the season as conditions necessitate.
Okay, thank you. And if council did have appetite to direct that we just remove all piles once per season, that's a lot of snow going in our snow dump, and that mountain looks pretty big some winters. Are we confident we actually have room in the current snow dump to accommodate that if council wanted to go that direction?
Mr. Nellis?
Through the chair, we do have room currently, as we are hauling those piles to our snow dump currently. So, you know, that snow does end up there at some point. This contract option may be to accelerate that process, but yeah, we would have capacity to hold them at the current, at the current levels. I would offer, as far, moving back to the ice for just one second, even if we haul the cul-de-sac piles, I would remind council that we are piling snow on basically all of the yards and boulevards along those streets. So simply removing that pile may not alleviate the ice issues in those neighborhoods, either as there's melting occurring, you know, at every other point in those residential neighborhoods, and not just those piles and the individual cul-de-sacs.
Thank you.
All right, Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thank you, Mr. Nellis, for you and your crew's work here over the year. I think there's been lots of stuff, I've had most of my questions asked, so I guess I'll comment on a few of them. We're constantly changing and modifying our snow removal policy. I know that sitting on council for the last three terms, I've seen at least six different changes, complete with let go, the seniors don't have to, the senior citizen pylon method, you know, the spray paint and stuff. We've added windrows, we've taken them away, we went to 10 to 13 to 10 again. I guess one thing that kept coming up over the course of the season, especially in the springtime, was how we measure when we do residential snow clearing. So a lot of that's based off of the snowpack, so that's that 10 to 13 to 10, and the ice that's accumulated underneath that. Many residents said, why don't you just count how many centimeters of snow has fallen, and at that, then start doing rounds? Is that a possibility? So for instance, let's say 20 centimeters of snow fell, and all priority ones were done. But, you know, we had a little bit of a warm spell, and those, those snowpacks melted down to about six centimeters, but we still had 20 centimeters of snowfall. What is, like, would it be really expensive to do snow removal that way based off of the, like, the residential snow clearing based off of the amount of snowfall versus the amount of snow accumulated?
Thank you, through the chair. Triggering snow removal event is definitely as much art as science. So, you know, taking your example, if we just took the 160 centimeters that we got over the course of the year, divided that by 10, we could be doing 16 rounds of snow removal. So we definitely take other factors into account. So, you know, the number of rounds that we are budgeted for, what the upcoming temperature looks like, what was the proximity to our last snowfall, what's the weather been like in the interim? Have we, has that snowpack raised or lowered? The way that we do it right now is basically going out, boring down to the street surface in numerous locations across the city, measuring to the top of the surrounding snow. If we're over our trigger amount in a number of locations around the city, and those other factors, you know, make sense in a line, then we do trigger that activation. So we're trying to walk the line between honoring the surface trigger and making reasonable decisions that get the maximum value out of each rotation.
Okay, no, thank you for that answer. I duly noted. My other question is in regards to the snow piles. How frequently do we trigger snow pile removal? Because there's different methods, but when we do like the center lane, like windrow, or the, I guess, the cul-de-sac mountains. So I know that most of the time, when I receive phone calls, the complaints are usually coming from people who are driving on streets with the center lane windrow, or that they live inside of a cul-de-sac, and they have that big mountain that's set up there. So how often do we trigger the removal of those piles?
Mr. Nellis?
Thank you, through the chair. I believe that you're mentioning the, like, our priority two windrows, so the ones that we would pile in the center of the road. Those, the service level for those is to be removed within 10 days of the completion of priority one snow removal. So right now, we're working on those actively, basically every snow rotation. The piles, we're not neglecting them. Basically, that's work that we do in between major snowfalls. So we'll allocate staff to be, you know, picking away at those piles, to be doing that kind of tidying up work between major snow events. So it is a laborious process. You know, as I said, there's 400 piles in the city, and depending if we're hauling from Royal Oaks or Pinnacle, those can be, can be long hauls to our central snow dump location. And I would also carry that over to residential streets themselves. So when we had that long period of melting between, you know, January and February, city crews were in residential streets. We were going in on a complaint basis, basically going through neighborhoods, dealing with the stuff that was the absolute worst. But it wasn't a unified citywide 15-piece of equipment effort that we might have if we were instituting a full contract round of residential removal.
Okay, and Mayor Clayton, if I may, I just have one question, just on snow dump capacity. So it's been mentioned, we do a lot of trucking to the snow dump. I actually used to live east of the snow dump, so I know why environmentally, we don't always want to pile it in the middle of a residential neighborhood, because wind does blow, and that dirt and salt does fly, and it wound up in my apartment building at least quite a bit, just by proximity. So what is our current snow dump capacity? And I know council will make a decision, a future council, on when we build a new snow dump, but currently, right now, how much capacity do we have left in our snow dump on the east side in Smith?
Through the chair. So this year, we hauled roughly 250,000 cubic meters of snow to our snow dump. The current capacity of that snow dump is around 700,000 cubic meters. So on a typical snow year, which is basically what we had this year, we do have enough capacity to store all the snow, and we do have some capacity for some growth. But we are definitely planning into the future and looking at potential options to bring forward at a later date for potential expansion of snow storage facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I have a couple of, I guess, concerns regarding the spring melt, which I've talked about many times, because in my many years of walking this planet, in this particular region, we have spring melts probably eight times out of 10. So it's, I'm always surprised that we call them the unusual spring melts, because they simply are not unusual. They happen all, they happen often. And my concern is, if we wait for residential complaints and then council makes a decision, that's a significant period of time, and often we've missed a really great window of opportunity to move half-melted ice off the street, which is a lot easier to move off than fully frozen ice. And I think for many residents, the ice itself in residential streets is not a concern. It's when it becomes heavily rutted, and you're, you know, you're banging your vehicle down through ruts, you're high-centering, some, you know, some small cars are pretty much incapacitated. I don't know, I think Councilor Thiessen probably had to move to a different community because of his car. And I just would really like to see, in our snow policy, some relaxation of language or relaxation of predetermined, you know, what we're going to do, to give of language, or relaxation of predetermined, you know, what we're going to do, to give you the opportunity to respond with common sense, sometimes, because I know that you and your team knew they were missing an opportunity to remove half-melted ice off the streets and make things better. I mean, we all live in neighborhoods. We all have to drive those same streets to get to our houses. So what I'm looking for is not big changes, but a little bit of flexibility in the language that allows you and your team to respond with common sense when you should be responding with common sense. I have very great faith that you and your team know what you're doing. And you know what the streets look like, and you know how much snow's on them, and you know what your budgets are. So I'm really comfortable giving you that opportunity for flexibility in the snow policy, because I know you'll take good advantage of it. You're not going to frivolously go plowing for, you know, no known reason, right? I know that. And so that's kind of where I want to see council moving in making any tweaks to this policy is, is for you, I know you and your team can come back with language that makes this work. And that's what I would really like to see. And also, you know, when we talk about removing ice, I don't think we need to remove ice to the street. We need to make roads smooth enough that people can drive down them. That's it. And I don't think our residents really expect much more than that. We all know we live in winter cities, and if people don't accept that, and they want a higher level of service than we're able to provide, then I'm sorry, they're living in the wrong communities. So, you know, I'm looking at my council members. That's where I'd like to see us go with this, with these changes. And then I have another question about potholes. I'll come back in the queue for that. So I don't really have a question.
Hi, Councilor Tull.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thanks Wade, being here. Over the years, we've had people that complained that they never got their streets done. Most of our vehicles that we use for snow removal have GPS on them, correct?
Some of them do, yes.
Some of them do. So I got a couple of questions in one question. If there's too many vehicles parked on the street, and I know my experience is somebody comes down and tells you to move your vehicle, because the grader will be here. Have we had anybody that never moved, or we didn't do a street because there was too much traffic? Are you aware of?
Thank you through the chair. There have been instances where we've had to abandon a neighborhood because there's been too many vehicles parked there. However, we have had very good cooperation from our bylaw team. So this year alone, 563 tickets were written for parking and obstructing snow removal activities.
Thank you.
So between that and the predictability of the service in residential, we're seeing better parking compliance than we have in previous years.
Sorry, how many tickets? Can you just tell me?
563.
Thanks. Good, Councilor Tull?
Yeah, and just, I agree with Gladys Blackmore. I think you guys are the people on the street. You know when, you know, we should probably spend 15 more minutes here and get the street tamed, rather than continue the next block. That would be my appreciation, that if you know that there's eight inches of snow that's slush, it's going to be froze solid tomorrow, then maybe we should get rid of that and move it off to the side. And...
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I'm fairly confident that's already happening, with those small decisions. If council has a different intent in regards to language, that would leave interpretation to the snow removal town, I think that, team, snow removal team, I think that's a different conversation. I have some comments on that, but I'm going to go to Councilor O'Connor, and then I'll go to those, and then I'm going to jump in, and then I'll go to those who are on their second or third time. Go ahead, Mr. Nellis.
Right, may I just respond quickly? While we're on the topic of service levels, ice and responsiveness, I completely agree that it would be good for this to be able to be done quickly. Should we get a window come up, or we know we're going to have warm weather, that we could respond to that and get those contractors organized quickly. However, I would bring it to council's attention that, having reduced your trigger now from 13 centimeters back to 10 centimeters, that likely would have triggered an additional round in February. And we may not have even been having this discussion based on the service level adjustment that you've already made. So you may want to consider going through another season at the existing level to see if that reduced trigger deals with the issues that you've already addressed.
Councilor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I appreciate your response, Mr. Nellis, and I think I concur with Gladys Blackmore, is to give you that little bit extra, if there is soft snow, I'd really like it that your policy would reflect that, and you get rid of that soft ice before it becomes a berg, and, sorry, a counselor berg, and remove that. So I'd be, I'd be happy that if we took a look at that. The other thing that I've noticed in some areas is that your staff came along a couple of times, and they couldn't find the manhole, so I had to go out and help them find where that manhole is. So I'm just wondering, can we not use those four-foot thing with the triangle or the circle on and say, this is where the manhole is, and have your crews take that and just clear that out, so they know where it is while they're doing the rotation? It's one bucket full, and that's just a suggestion. So I'm saying that may solve a bit of that problem of buildup of water, and then ice, and then a terrible road. So just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Mr. Nellis.
Thank you through the chair. With there being around 8,000 catch basins through the city, we haven't considered doing, you know, flag installations on them. However, our staff are trained to be identifying and attempting to keep clear residential catch basins as we go through the program. So we have had some new staff, so maybe they require some assistance to find the catch basin in your particular neighborhood, but we are definitely making sure that they're aware of those, that they're using GIS resources to identify those. We'll use metal detectors to find them, but it is a priority as we go through to try and keep those drains as clear as we possibly can.
I'm just going to jump in the queue before I go to those who have already gone. A couple comments for myself. For me, it's primarily about residential snow removal. I think the snow removal team did an excellent job on priority ones and priority twos. My concern, and if you, if you put yourself in the average person's shoes, they get up in the morning and they try to drive down their street, and they rush to get, to drop their kids off at school and get to work, and the snow is frozen, because it's early in the morning, and it's crusty, and it's brutal, then you've had a busy day at work, and now you're doing the same way, and you're coming home, and your street is a disaster, because it's melted and thawed, and now it's bad the other way. And so when you start your day off and end your day off in a, not a comfortable situation, you're not going to be happy. And so for me, it's strictly about residential. I do believe council should entertain or consider removing, or moving the snow removal policy back to 10 centimeters. That one other round would be significant. I also think council should consider the budget impact and have a discussion about residential snow removal. When you look at table four, I mean, it identifies that because of other accumulations or other snow events, that we had to switch back to priority one, it meant that some residential areas weren't completed. And I know we caught up, and we did what we could, but for example, when there's a reset by a snowfall, I don't know if we're getting as much focus on the residential as we could. And so my question, Mr. Nellis, and I had a couple other things, is are there additional resources that we can contract when we aren't able, when the priority one keeps resetting? I know that's our team, and the contracts are residential, but we also know that they may not have got done completely. Are there other resources that are required to have residential snow removal done in a more timely manner?
Thank you through the chair. So just to give a little bit of context on that, those two systems run fairly independently of one another. So a reset on the priority system doesn't reset the residential system. So we always run through that complete two-week rotation, and then take the extra days that might be necessary if we need to, to finish that. So those priority resets don't affect that?
But the priority one resets affect the priority two reset.
They do.
Priority two...
That's right. And part of the reason that we saw the service level drop in December was that we'd reset twice. So we had a lot of accumulation on priority twos. We ended up with huge windrows that took a very long time to haul out. So the real impact of those resets is felt on those priority two and three streets as opposed to the deeper residential neighborhoods.
And so by having that different trigger for snow removal, we probably would have got the priority ones completed sooner, because we would have started removing snow sooner, and we potentially could have got to priority twos quicker. Is that correct?
Thank you through the chair. The triggers for residential service only.
Nope, for priority ones. So within the, it's within, what is it, 5 to 10 centimeters for priority ones?
Right.
And so is there a mechanism for us to get, for a trigger for that to be sooner, and it's tied into Councilor Blackmore's comment of leaving that snow removal at your discretion? Do you start snow removal quicker, which means then you actually get to priority twos quicker? And if there's a reset because of more snow, the priority twos are actually done?
Thank you through the chair. I hope I'm understanding this correctly. With priority ones, we basically go as soon as there's enough snow to plow. So we're really not waiting for anything on that right now.
It says 5 to 10 centimeters.
That's the guideline that we put out. Usually, it's about that 5 centimeters, where there's enough to actually put blades on the, on the, on the street and do something productive. But yeah, as soon as we're able to, we're out there. We're never waiting for a particular trigger to arrive.
And then priority two, but it's 24 hours after that snowfall?
24 hours after the conclusion of the snowfall. We would be complete priority ones.
That's the other part of it, right? So it could be, in 24 hours, you could get 30 centimeters of snow.
That's right.
So you're waiting for that snowfall to end?
When we start the clock. Not when we start plowing. We'll be plowing throughout that event. But our service level is to complete that priority one plowing within 24 hours of the end of the snow event.
Assuming that's possible, depending on the quantity of snow. Because our team is only so big, it's continually snowing, you've reset the clock, it's not necessarily possible that, because you'll just keep redoing priority ones, and you won't get to priority twos.
Absolutely. We'll, if we got a continuous heavy snowfall, we'll stay on priority ones until that snowfall ends, simply because we're dealing with orders of magnitude, more vehicles on those streets than we're seeing on residential or priority twos. So in the case of a heavy prolonged snowfall, we would stay on priority ones. If we have sufficient resources, we might start ducking into some school zones and some priority twos, but largely, we'll be staying on priority ones until that snow event finishes, and then we'll start moving into those.
Okay. So I still believe council should, in the residential snow removal, reconsider changing the trigger back to 10 centimeters. I also think, to Councilor Bressi's comments, snow removal piles are an issue. So I know there's a budget impact. My intent would to see, I have a report come back to see that budget impact on snow removal piles, and the next council to have that consideration and budget deliberation. And I know some of my colleagues want to move to pothole conversations. I'm just going to start, oh, sorry, back to my first question. Is there more contractors available if council wanted to have a enhanced service in residential snow removal?
Thank you through the chair. One option that we didn't include here is that we could, right now, we run with five teams in residential. So that's five teams of two loaders and one grader. One thing that we could potentially look at would be adding a sixth team to that, to that fleet. Basically, it would add roughly $50,000 to the cost for rotation, taking it from $250,000 to $300,000. But it would likely give us a better completion rate in residential. And yeah, that would be one option to consider as well.
Okay. I'm going to pivot to potholes, and if my colleagues have questions on potholes, let's jump on that. You mentioned in your report, the number of pothole calls, approximately 328 pothole reports. Do you know how that compares over the last few years? Is that, is it, is it up, or do you have any comparators for me?
Sorry, I don't have the historicals on that, but we could definitely report back.
I just, we know it was a bad freeze and thaw year, so I would assume the calls were increased. But I also don't know, many calls that my council colleagues and I took were, and we would tell people to call, they had no idea. So I don't know if it's really up, because a lot of people still don't know about that service, about calling on potholes. And then I'm going to go to my council colleagues if they have questions on potholes, then I think Councilor Blackmore and Councilor Plot potentially have some business arising. So I'll go to Councilor O'Connor first.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I thought, you know, that the 3-1-1 was an excellent way, if you had the location, and I was able to call, and I got excellent response, because I knew exactly where the pothole was. A lot of people can't describe where those pothole is, and that may be an issue that needs to be dealt with. I don't know how, but anyway, I was able to pick the lane and say, this is a bad one, and they were there in a few days. So that was great. And I'll just end with, I was a priority B, and I never saw the snow removal till March, because it all kept resetting A. So I'm glad you're looking at adding another crew, because the As got it all the time, but the Bs never got to.
And so, oh, you mean, in residential, you were on B. So maybe just for context, can you provide some background on how the A-B rotation worked? And, because I don't think you address that in your report. Were you happy with how the A-B rotation worked, and was there areas that maybe need to change?
Thank you through the chair. We always strive for 100% completion, and I would be very interested to hear maybe where you're at, and we can talk about the records that we might have for your particular area. However, the week A, week B system seems to be working well. And as I mentioned before, we're seeing, anecdotally, I don't have hard numbers on this, but my people in the field definitely say that we're seeing better parking compliance, because this has become a more reliable, predictable service. And that's precisely the reason that we don't advocate for, you know, an alternating week A, week B system as to who starts first, because from an operational standpoint, the more predictable and repeatable that service is, the more, the better compliance that we can expect to see from residents.
Okay. Counselor Plot. Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Sorry, I did just have one more snow removal question, and I'll jump into the pothole.
Okay, go for it.
I'm just curious, what happens with industry as the city continues to grow and infill lots, hopefully get to be built out? I'm hearing a lot of concern with industry, of where do they put snow? Do we allow contractors to use our snow storage facility?
Mr. Nellis.
Through the chair, at this time, we do not.
So can I just ask, I'm just curious, because this is going to be an ongoing problem for our community. Is there an opportunity for the city to work with industry to make that a revenue source? If it sounds like we have 250,000 used now, and we got a facility up to 750, it seems like we've got some ability to use that. So I'm just wondering, is that an opportunity for the city to be working with industry? Is that something that parks good, or transport base could work with on that?
Mr. Nellis.
Thank you through the chair. There have been some discussions ongoing around what the business model might look like for a potential additional snow dump site. Those discussions are very preliminary at this point. However, as far as the use of our current snow removal facility, I would say that this was an average or below average snow year, so I would be hesitant to try to utilize the rest of that capacity for private industry, knowing that there could be winters where we require that.
No, not sure. I guess with the cost of these snow storage dumps, I just, my fear is over time in our community, what you're going to see is more and more renegate dumps all over the place, which will have contamination issues and may stagnate that later on for environmental reasons. So just would like to try to get in front of that more than, be guided on that, because I do think it's going to be a concern moving forward. I hear more and more of it from the contractors this year, particularly from last year even. So just probably double the calls on that. So just, put that out for food for thought.
Just before you switch to potholes, Mr. Nellis, if council was interested in adding that sixth team, remind me, so where do these contractors, where do we expect them to, there will be more snow overall, because we'll be removing it quicker in a rotation. Where are they putting their snow? Remind me.
So those contractors will be piling it on residential lawn, or, you know, the boulevard portion of residential lawns in those cul-de-sacs, or in areas where there are dual sidewalks, will be piling it in parking lanes.
So if we wanted those contractors to be removing those piles that are, you know, the hills that are accumulated in a cul-de-sac, then where are they taking them?
Thank you through the chair. At the moment, those piles are being hauled slowly, but they are taken to our snow dump.
And that's, we're doing that, or the residential contractor is doing that?
We are doing that.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm just, I guess, Mr. Nellis, if you can walk me through, I think I understand our pothole process, but what I, I just wanted clarification on is, do we GPS every pothole? And if it's a certain size or a certain size cavity, do we come back and do a full tear out and reclamation on that pothole at a later time?
Mr. Nellis.
Thank you through the chair. We don't take GPS locations of every pothole. We don't take GPS locations of every pothole, but as councillor O'Connor described, there is a thorough intake process that tries to get us the most precise location we possibly can. And if we're filling potholes that are, uh, outside of the complaint, but we notice things nearby, then we enter those into our system as well. Uh, we definitely do take a look at those, um, asphalt conditions and we do make notes of locations where we would like to return, uh, when we're getting hot asphalt and our paving programs fire up in the, in the springtime. So we definitely do take that information into account for our summer programs.
Okay, thanks. One last question, Mayor Clayton.
Sure.
Years back, I think councillor Bressi and myself were at, uh, an AB munis, uh, and they had a beautiful little machine that looked like a bobcat that would actually come up, it blew out the cavity, it's put an enamel in the cavity, it placed the concrete pavements and it rolled it all in one machine. I'm just wondering, has the city looked at any technology like that of what we could be buying for, how these could be, uh, done with a little bit less backwork? And what I found with that machine looking at it was, they could do quite a few of them at a time, but it also did GPS them as well.
Mr. Nellis.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, we are looking at, uh, numerous new pothole technologies and may bring something forward to, uh, to capital budget. Uh, we have seen some, uh, equipment like what you're mentioning. The challenge here, a lot of those are meant for summer conditions, so it might not give us a huge help when it comes to dealing with these challenging pothole conditions or when dealing with wet icy, icy roads. Uh, but we are looking at some additional options and technologies.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm gonna check with councillor Blackmore. You're still waiting to do some business? Or do you have any other questions? Go for it. I, I have others that have questions, so do your question and I'll come back to you for business arising.
Isn't necessarily related to, uh, snow removal, but it is related to potholes. I've noticed, and I've never remembered to ask this question at council table, I've noticed that, um, the place where your passenger front wheel goes around a corner, anytime you go around a corner in intersection, that's frequently a really bad spot for potholes. I'm thinking because maybe the pavement center there, I don't know, or I don't have an, I don't have a scientific explanation for this. But I'm wondering if, um, there is some, uh, engineering solution to that that would strengthen those corners or make them less prone to potholes? Um, if that would, uh, in the end, reduce the cost of road maintenance. I guess that's my question, just thoughts on whether, how that happens, why that happens, and if there's something we could do to mitigate those circumstances.
Mr. Nellis.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, you're definitely correct. Turning movements are definitely harder on pavement than, uh, you know, straight ahead movements are. And you can see that in the wear of, um, crosswalk lines and everything. It's definitely routine, the, the asphalt should not be any thinner on the, uh, on the sides or in those corners than they are in, in the, in the rest of the roadway. Right now, our, our roads are designed to, uh, um, you know, recognize specifications. So I'm, I'm confident that what we are installing is as prepared as possible for that, but it is, uh, definitely a noted, uh, noted problem.
So it's just that it's creating more force on the pavement as tire goes around the corner?
I don't know the exact physics of it, but yeah, definitely we do see a lot more, uh, wear in areas where there's, you know, frequent turning movements than, uh, than in our straight ahead lanes.
Is there a fix?
Uh, thank you through the chair. So the fix is basically the same as anything else with asphalt. You know, if it gets bad enough, we'll have to, to patch and repair, or, uh, we may need to do some, some paper passes or some additional overlay work if it gets, uh, particularly bad.
So the corner of 92nd Street and 104th Avenue has, has been plagued with potholes all spring.
Okay.
But there is really rough.
Okay.
Thank you through the chair. I'll be happy to, uh, relay that to our team and give it some extra attention.
Uh, councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Um, speaking of, speaking of technology for, for potholes, I know so many municipalities have, um, been, have been trying out technology where you put it on a garbage truck or another municipal vehicle that gets all across the, across the city regularly. You put a camera on it, you've got AI technology that automatically reports those potholes. I'm wondering if we've been in touch with, if we've been tracking any of those experimental projects and see if there might be application for that here in Grand Prairie.
Mr. Nellis.
Thank you through the chair. We've actually trialed some of this equipment. It, the, uh, the product that's delivered is not necessarily as, as advertised. So we have had some good results with it, but we did find a lot of false positives, a lot of, uh, cleanup work on the data that was, uh, that was presented and we, we didn't feel it would, uh, present us with a considerable operational benefit at this time.
Excellent. Glad to know that we're looking for better solutions and definitely respect when they don't work out. So thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Councillor O'Connor.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mayor Clayton. And this is in reference to what councillor Plot brought up. And I think he was referring more to if you identify a pothole in the wintertime, you've done a rough patch on it. And then in the summer, when the weather is better, do we or will we look at equipment like councillor Bressi and councillor Plot saw at the AB munis would go in there, one machine does all the things without, and saving, uh, backbreaking work, I think is what he was referring to. Are we, or can we take a look at, uh, finding out what that equipment is?
I think Mr. Nellis answered that you'll see a, if you happen to be on council in the fall budget, you will see a capital ask for piece of equipment that does similar operations. Is that correct, Mr. Nellis?
Thank you through the chair. We, we are investigating that and if we find something that we think might be an operational benefit, then we'd be happy to bring it forward to your budget.
Okay, and that's, but I heard that it couldn't be used in the wintertime was what you had mentioned and not what, what councillor Plot was referring to. I'll wait for winter or budget time. Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking to business arising. I'm happy to make motions, but I'll open it up to my colleagues. I'd like to, personally, I would support a motion to defer the implementation of a sixth residential snow removal team to the fall budget deliberations. Councillor Blackmore.
I would move that, uh, administration bring back a report adjusting the snow policy, uh, snow removal policy to include options for a sixth residential round of snow clearing, um, as well as, um, language that is, um, more flexible when needed, uh, to accommodate unusual weather conditions. And there was a third one.
Um, are, are you considering reducing the trigger to 10 centimeters?
And to reduce the trigger from 13 centimeters in residential to, back to 10.
Sorry, my apologies, that's already in place. So there's just the two for now, I think. Unless you want to address snow piles in residential?
Uh, no, cause I think we do a fine job having, living, living with a snow pile.
So those two are in order. Uh, councillor Bressi, discussion or debate on that motion or is it something else?
No, thank you, it is on this. And I don't know if I can support this because I do, so we had a lot of discussion last budget deliberations about moving from 10 centimeters to 13 centimeters. And I was really opposed to moving to 13 centimeters, but I'll admit right now, I think I was mostly wrong. I thought that the 13 centimeter trigger would be an issue for all of the winter. I really only do think it was an issue at the end of the winter when we started getting that red, when we started getting the, when we started getting the thaw. But for most of the winter, 13 was fine. So I'd actually prefer to move our trigger back to 13 centimeters, but also give administration the authority to institute another round when spring melt comes, so that we're still only planning to do five removals on a typical year, but we can get rid of that spring, that spring melt without spending another quarter million dollars. And so that's why I'm not sure if I can support this personally.
Okay, so just for my colleagues, uh, councillor Blackmore's motion is in the escribe and for councillor Plot who may be driving, I'll just read it quickly. Committee direct administration to bring back a report to the appropriate standing committee with potential amendments to policy 606 to include options for a sixth, uh, nope, it's a sixth team, not a round of, uh, residential snow clearing, as well as language that is more flexible as needed to accommodate unusual weather conditions. Mr. Nellis.
Sorry, through the chair. Currently, the number of teams isn't in the policy. So that would be more of a, a budget decision rather than a policy revision.
So rather than a number of teams, let's just put to remove, to increase the residential snow removal budget to accommodate another team? Or would you like it increased to 300,000? Chief Laban?
I think if it passes, we'll bring forward a policy recommendation for how to enact that.
Okay, so the motion will be to bring back a report identifying areas for increased service in the residential snow removal. Okay? Uh, councillor Plot, a discussion or debate on the motion or something else?
No, thanks, Mayor Clayton, discussion on that motion. I just, I guess for me, I'm, I, I a hundred percent agree with councillor Bressi. I'd like to see the trigger stay there. Um, so I think if I'm understanding the way that motion's written, um, I couldn't support it because it's not split out.
So sorry, two different sort of, kind of two different things. Councillor Bressi talked about changing the motion back to 13 centimeters, which I was just reminded, uh, that the motion was actually, um, moved to 10 centimeters by council when we implemented, uh, the, the most, the extra round this February. Um, so it's currently at 10 centimeters. Councillor Bressi identified that he personally was interested in increasing that back to 13, so that's a different discussion. Uh, councillor Blackmore's motion is about a report coming back to standing committee with potential amendments for policy 606 identifying increased residential snow removal as well as language that makes it, that is more flexible, um, to accommodate unusual weather conditions. So I'll come back to the trigger in a different conversation, um, more that this will be a report that comes back from administration to the appropriate standing committee to talk about, um, potential for increased residential snow removal.
Hey, I appreciate the clarification and happy to support that.
Councillor O'Connor.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I will, uh, do not support the going to the old, I know it's gonna come up later, but I would, I'm really in support of councillor Blackmore's motion as it stands, and I am vehemently opposed to 13 again.
All right, so when that comes up, you won't speak on it, right? Since you did?
Well, no, no, I'm.
All right, anyways, I have no one else in the queue. Councillor Blackmore, do you wish to close on your motion? Seeing, uh, a no from that, I'll call the question.
Councillor O'Connor in favor?
Councillor Plot in favor?
Thiessen in favor.
And that carries seven to one. If there are other items, um, I, um, I don't know if anybody had additional, councillor Bressi had mentioned snow removal po- piles. Councillor Plot, go ahead as you have your hand up.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Mayor Clayton, I, I don't really care about correcting the record, but I didn't realize that the six removals have been taken out of that motion before we voted on it. That's why I said no to it. I actually don't have a problem with that pass, but I don't really care about correcting the record on that.
So could you change councillor Bressi's record of motion or of voting to be in favor? Thanks. Go ahead though councillor Bressi.
Sure, and then I would like to move that, uh, council direct administration to also include amendments policy 606 to change the trigger to 13 centimeters. And just to speak this really briefly, I already sort of did, but I think 13 centimeters does, did work fine. And again, I was opposed to it at the time and I'll admit I was wrong. I think it did work fine in November, December, January till we started to get that melt. It didn't work when things broke down, but if we're giving more flexibility to remove snow in unusual weather conditions, then I'm pretty comfortable with going back to that 13 trigger that we tried out. For me, I do have the privilege of getting to visit cities across Alberta and every community has their council's regular hearing, regularly hearing they've got the worst snow removal anywhere. I think that's just a universal thing all councillors hear. But when I do visit other communities, I really do think that we've got a Cadillac service of snow removal. And for me, I don't want to spend more money on snow removal than we already spend, but I'm very happy to reallocate money. So if we're gonna add an extra removal in the spring, that I'd like to do it by saving a removal somewhere else in the winter.
Okay, so councillor, uh, Bressi's motion is in the queue. A discussion or debate on that motion?
Yes, I vehemently oppose that because, uh, I never saw a snow plow from January through to March and I think that's unfair. I'd like to see, uh, Mr. Nellis's team get the option to take discretion and do snow removal, uh, when it's appropriate and not going back to the 13. So I will not be supporting your motion.
Councillor Plot.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Um, I, I'm happy to support this motion. I think it comes back to as a community, sometimes we have to try things. We tried this and I agree with councillor Bressi. It wasn't till the spring thaw that we had an issue. We just passed a motion as well that said we're gonna allow a little bit more latitude to administration. So I think if the 13 centimeters and a little, little bit of latitude administration, I'm confident that this will be fine for our community. We do have to find ways at some point to not offer a Cadillac everything service, and this is still a great service, a little bit of Cadillac everything, so happy to support it.
Thanks for that councillor Plot. Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I was opposed to going to 13 in the first place. I'm still opposed to going to 13 in the, uh, now, because again, we did see that accumulation at 11, nine, 12, nine. You know, we don't get that activation, but that snow builds up and that turns into ice and we didn't have that trigger to get rid of the ice. So, so to me, actually, that, that may have been a tipping point as to why we have the ice issues this year. So again, similar to my vote last time, I, I'm opposed to bumping up to 13.
It's councillor Berg. I too won't support this motion. I believe that, um, as mentioned, some of the issues that were faced in, and in, uh, freeze and thaw were due to the fact that less snow overall was removed from residential. Um, I think that if we get in front of it in the, in the early winter periods, that we will have greater success in the spring. So, um, I will admit that although I supported this initially, as I think we have an incredible snow removal service, I think we went too far with this, so I will not support this motion. Uh, councillor Bressi to close. Oh, sorry, councillor Plot, go ahead.
Sorry, I just forgot to put my hand out.
Okay, councillor Bressi to close.
No, I've made my point. Thank you, Mayor Clayton.
I'll call the question.
Councillor Thiessen opposed.
Councillor Plot in favor?
Councillor O'Connor opposed.
And that is defeated five to three. So, uh, I will now, just one final request for any other business that may be arising. And I'm assuming councillor Plot, your hands just still up. If seeing none, thank you, Mr. Nellis.
Sorry, Mayor Clayton.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor Clayton. Um, I'm just wondering, um, do we need to make a motion specifically about pile clearing or is that gonna be part of the budget deliberations? I guess I just would like to make sure that is addressed on this.
Sorry, can you?
More of a trigger if administration looking for a date?
Sorry, can you ask that again? We didn't hear you, Will.
Sorry, Mayor Clayton, I'm just wondering if there needs to be a motion around the snow pile clearing or if that's just coming to that next debate? And if there needs to be a trigger put in place about what that snow pile clearing? It seems like most other things have 10 days or a certain amount of centimeters or something, but I am concerned with the snow pile clearing just having a hundred percent discretion. I do think the community needs to know there's an end date when there's a pile put in front of their cul-de-sac or front of their home. So I'm just wondering what direction administration would like on that.
Um, I think it could come back in the same report. However, I would suggest that you make a motion as you've already completed that discussion. So, uh, directing administration to bring back, uh, potential opportunities for enhanced services on removing snow piles. Would that cover what you're looking for?
Uh, yeah, that'd be bang onto my wording on that actually, Mayor Clayton. So if they could bring that back to the appropriate standing committee, um, and what the cost implications would be, that would be great.
Sounds good. I'll just give Ms. Van Bly the moment to get that in the escribe. All right, so committee direct administration to bring back a report to the appropriate standing committee with potential opportunities for enhanced services on removing snow piles. Uh, councillor Blackmore, you on this or something else? Okay, call the question on that one.
In favor.
Councillor Plot in favor?
Councillor O'Connor in favor?
That carries unanimously. Uh, now moving to councillor Blackmore.
Yeah, I just have a question regarding future snow dumps. Do we have any idea what that would cost to put a snow dump, say on the northwest corner of the city somewhere? And if there would, if, and if we have any idea what the cost savings of transportation would be because of that? If you don't have an idea right now, that's fine. An email would be fine.
I just don't know if Mr. Nellis recalls all the information from that report.
I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers with me at this.
Gee, you could just email it to me, would be fine. And then following up with Counsel Plot's in regards to private snow removal, whether or not you could make a case for income from that source offsetting some of the cost of a snow dump? Just curious about how that might look going forward, but it's not really pertinent to this discussion today.
So Mr. Nellis, if you could send council an email with information in regards to that, that'd be great. Okay, anything else on snow removal or Policy 606? I guess we still probably need, do you want a motion to receive the rest of the report for information? Okay, so we will move on to item 3.5. Thank you, Mr. Nellis. Bill 50, the Municipal Affairs Statutes Amendment Act. Pardon me. And Ms. Pinnock has an introduction for that.
Last fall, Bill 20 was passed, which made amendments to the MGA and the Local Authorities' Elections Act. Since then, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs did engagement and identified some areas where further clarity was required and additional changes the government wished to make concerning municipalities and elections. That's reflected in Bill 50. So the report before you identifies some of those changes that will impact all municipalities across Alberta and some changes that will apply only to a few. I won't go into all the details, but just a couple of highlights. One of the things that has come up and received a lot of attention is the repeal of the codes of conduct, the biggest concern being the gap between when the bill receives royal assent and when new legislation might be in place in the spring of 2026. Another thing that's in there is the natural person powers and reporting of CAOs. There has been some amendments to that that were passed for the bill. Intermunicipal Collaboration Frameworks defines what has to be included in ICFs, clarity around capital costs, and clarity around data to determine assumptions, and also some changes to the Elections Act, including the clarifying the use of voter-assisted terminals. And for this item in particular, if this is something that council wished to include in the 2025 election, a bylaw does need to be passed by June 30th of 2025. The bill has received third reading and is currently waiting royal assent. When it does receive royal assent, the provisions do take immediate effect. The municipality will have roughly six months to update any of our bylaws and policies to be in alignment with the new legislation as per other changes to provincial government policy. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for the report. One thing I just want to make crystal clear, I'm understanding, because it is so important to me, is talking about allowing people with, where did that go? Talking about the election rules and allowing people with disabilities to vote and assisting them, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly that we've got mechanisms in place to allow those people to vote that are non-technology assisted, but we do have them in place, and we're confident those people can vote without any action of council. Am I understanding it correctly?
Ms. Pinnock?
Through the chair, currently, a voter that does require some assistance can fill out the appropriate forms and can have somebody assist them in the voter booth. This voter assistant terminal allows somebody to vote completely in private with no assistance. That's the difference.
Gotcha, and we've never used those in past elections, so we haven't lost the ability to use them, I think.
Ms. Pinnock?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Blackmore.
I have a similar question. Historically, if someone was infirm or unable to attend a voter station to vote, they could ask for someone to travel to their home. We still do that?
Ms. Pinnock?
Through the chair, there is provisions for that in the legislation, and we do have to have a plan if we are requested to have that particular service offered.
Okay, I know that we used to have a little group of people who did access that service. I don't know if they have in recent years. Then my second question, if I could, I need someone to explain to me what natural person power is referring to, because it's, it's outside the scope of what I am familiar with that term. And the last time, well, actually, I've never stabbed our CAO to see if he bleeds red blood, but I suspect he does.
Mr. Burke, you don't have to answer that assumption, but.
I'll give the shortest version and the non-legal version. It's when, when I'm acting on behalf of the city. So the city has natural persons' powers, can enter contracts and agreements. When I, when I sign or have delegated that authority to someone else to sign, that would, that would have triggered. Amendments have been made to the act even this week to, to more focus this to, to emerging issues and not previously approved things, such as something approved in the budget. I wouldn't have to report every time I sign a contract of something that was previously approved. So they've narrowed the scope of this in the amendments this week to a much more manageable emerging issue that council would want to be made aware of.
So it is still the same natural person definition that applies to corporations?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, just looking for a motion on this.
I could do that.
Go ahead, Counsel Blackmore.
I move that the committee receive this report for information.
Thank you for that motion. Seeing no one in the queue or no one in line with questions or discussion or debate, I will call the question. Please vote.
O'Connor in favor?
Plot in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item 3.6, Large Multifamily Development Grant, and I'm thinking Mr. Tarrant is going to come on this one. We'll give him a moment to get set up, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. On the, at the May 5th council meeting, council requested administration to bring back a report looking at options for a 10-year sliding scale tax rebate program for the building of 125-plus unit apartment buildings. Council has taken that and provided the Policy 357. You can see the amendments that would be proposed there that look at the 10-year tax rebate program. We've also looked at, provided some background information in terms of where the, some of the past vacancy rates are within the city, looking at the, where rents have gone, looking at a number of the other grants that are available locally and federally, as well as provided a jurisdictional scan, which showed that, showed where other municipalities within the province are incentivizing housing developments in a variety of different ways. With that, it is the recommendation to receive this report for information and happy to take any questions you would have.
Counsel Blackmore.
I have a couple of questions. One is, in year one for sure, they're still paying their bare land taxes. Is that the intent? And so is it year two, bare land taxes plus 90% of the building? Like, I'm not, not understanding quite how that would work. It would in fact be my preference that we don't start collecting taxes until at least year three, to give two years for, for the building to be complete, because until it's complete, it doesn't actually generate an income.
Mr. Tarrant.
Yeah, through the chair. So as with the previous program, these, the taxes that would be rebated are only eligible for incrementally new taxes, and so any land taxes would still continue to be charged as well as any provincial and grand spirit taxes continue to be levied. We did, if you look in the alternatives, we did suggest there is an alternative there provided that is a six-year sliding, and in that one, there is, you know, three years of 100%. So the, I mean, the program can be modeled, that's how it was previously done. The, the four-year program that we have was 100, three years at 100% rebate, and then the fourth year at 50%.
So using that model, does the save, tax savings over six years more or less equate the tax savings that would have been gained over 10 years on the other option?
Mr. Tarrant.
Yeah, so we did do, you know, a calculation of looking at, you know, the different, you know, scales. So for the current program, if you were looking at around a, you know, 100-unit apartment with the four years, it's between 600 and 700,000 is what the benefit would be over the, the course of the four years. If you look at that alternative number two, which is the six-year sliding scale, it's about 900 to 1.2 million would be the amount rebated over that six-year period. And if you look at the, the 10-year, and, and the 10-year with the 100% in year one, 90% year two, as laid out there, it's about between 1.2 and 1.5 million over the 10 years.
So a slight improvement, maybe. Okay, I'm good for now.
Any other questions on this report? Counsel Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm just kind of debating here in my own mind, and I don't know if Mr. Tarrant will have the answer to it. So I was just kind of curious in my mind, with the, with the sliding scale over 10 years, what would the cost be to the city? But as I weigh the counter argument, right now, we don't get any because nothing's being built. So in your professional estimation, is this a cost, is there, would it tip to the benefits? Or is there a cost to the city, or what's your quick thoughts?
You know, ultimately, there is, you know, council has to decide, you know, where, at what scale do we want to provide, you know, the, the rebate program? And, you know, there's certainly, you know, doing research of other jurisdictions, you know, there are, there's only one other city in Alberta that is providing, you know, a tax rebate of the, you know, midsize, larger midsize cities there, and, and yet, there is a building that's happening in many of those other communities. Some offer, you know, other types of development programs, and so, you know, our recommendation is that there should be, you know, some program in place that will help incentivize and move the needle ahead, just to be cautious that we don't go too far and, you know, give up two, two creative tax dollars in which you, you know, there might not be the return in the end.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just wanted to get clarification. I'm just, on the 10-year sliding scale, is it 10 years from occupancy, or is it 10 years from when they pull the permit?
Mr. Tarrant.
From when they pull the permit. So from the, as soon as the building permit is approved, that's day one, and that's where the, the first year would be at 100%, starting from the building permit date.
Okay, and so that, so to Counsel Blackmore's comment earlier, if it takes them two years to build 190, they're, they're starting to pay on taxes on the second year while they're building, and then third year, they're still descending from there down.
Mr. Tarrant.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just, I guess I'm not sure if you're looking for business arising yet. I'm, I'm happy to support, but I would like to, to look at amendments and having the first two years be at zero. So again, give your developer the chance to get their stuff together, and if they're not done in two years, I'm probably not as empathetic about trying to help them out, but if they get those two years figured out, while their cash flow is zero, to help them through that, and then start that 90 descending down to 30 instead of to 10, how it was, but still leaving a 10-year scale. Would that work for administration? I just want to make sure that that's a possibility.
So, so, just so I'm clear on what you're thinking, if year one and two were 0-0, you're going to make up between year three and year 11 that, to get to 100%?
Yeah, you'll go 90, 80, 70, and you won't get to 10, but you'll get to 30% on that third year, and, and, but it's only a 10-year total tax setup.
Mr. Tarrant.
Through the chair, yes, that is possible. Just, just to clarify, so there would be 100% in the first two years, but still only a 10-year program, so it would end at the 20% in the 10th year.
Is that your thought?
Yep, that sounds, yep, 100%, okay. So is that a motion that I can make now, Mayor Clayton? Did you want to have more discussion?
No, go for it.
Okay, so I would just move that council adopt a 10-year strategy that would allow the, a tax rebate program that would have a 0% in the first year, 0% in the second year, and 90% in the third year, sliding to 20% in year 10.
Sorry, but, so it's 100% rebate, so they pay zero in taxes, just so we're, yeah.
For the first, yeah, just for the first two years, and then in year three, it starts to slide.
Just so we're all in the same language, it's, because the, the report has 190, but you're 100, 100, and then 90, in year 10, you'd be at 20.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton.
Okay, so we'll give a moment to get that in the East Grib. I'll take questions, comments, discussion, debate on that motion, recognizing Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I, I don't thi, I don't think I can support this, and just to speak to that, I, when these apartment buildings fill up, there are residents there that will be consuming municipal services, and this is the only way we get tax revenue for, to pay for police, fire, parks, recreation facilities, all of those things that these residents will demand. Unlike other levels of government, we don't get income taxes, we don't get corporate taxes, we don't get sales taxes. Property taxes are truly the only way that we can fund the services we deliver to these residents. And I do think something's in order, especially when these buildings are getting built and waiting to fill up and getting their ops going. Something's in order to help them get started. I could, I could support getting a little bit more aggressive than our current program. So for example, alternative number two that's in this package, I would support something like that. But for me, a 10-year timeframe before these residents start paying the same price as other people in similar buildings that just have to be older, is just too long a timeframe for me. I, this is a very subjective thing, since I don't have an objective reason to say, hey, why this goes a little bit too far for me, because I don't think any of us can. It really is a judgment call, but for me, this is just a little bit more aggressive that I'm personally in support of.
Okay, Counsel Blackmore.
I will support the motion. I did, I have given a lot of thought to the concerns that Counsel Bressi has raised, and I think in the end, the, the answer that I come to is if you can increase the work, worker population, the, the job pool in Grand Prairie significantly enough to draw in other businesses, which I think that these apartment buildings have the potential to do, then in fact, you're, you're in the driver's seat to, to make up that money through commercial and industrial taxes. I, I think that, you know, as Counsel Bressi says, it's a very subjective argument, but in the end, that's where I landed, is I am comfortable with a 10-year program, and I, and I understand that that may in the end create some extra cost to the city, but I think that there's other ways for us to make that revenue in the, in our job market, and fingers crossed that's what happens. That's what I'm, that's where I'm ending up on this argument.
Counsel O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I will also support this motion and give the contractor relief and the developer relief in those first two years, and then as a sliding scale, I think this will do exactly what Counsel Blackmore has mentioned, so I will vote in favor for this.
Counsel O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I spent a little while thinking about this. I thought in my mind, five years would be the maximum that I would think, and over the last five or six days, I feel that sometimes you got to go where the, the development is. They've been under a lot of duress because of costs and doing business, and I'm willing to go the 10-years sliding scale.
Counsel Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Forgive me if it's in the report, but I'm just not seeing it. Is there an end date to this?
Yeah, through the chair, the recommendation is to keep it the same as the other program, which would be December 31st of this year, that the building permits would have to be received by the end of the year. received by the end of the year, be approved and provided through the grant program by the end of the year.
Excellent, thank you.
Watching, how long do we expect any permitting, et cetera, to take? So they're not coming in on December 30, hoping to get this?
Yeah, we are asking that they have them in before December 1, have the applications in.
Thank you for that. All right, I see no one else in the queue? Oh, sorry, Counselor Platt, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. It was just to close, if there was nobody to speak to it.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I'll be quick on it. I just do want to remind everybody, we have almost no vacancy in our community, housing shortage, and it's been a priority of this council for four years. Thankfully, grand spirits build a building, but outside of a not-for-profit building, a building that we gave free land to and a bunch of incentives, nobody has stepped forward. And so as much as I don't want to see us hurt the future income of our city, I don't really think we have a lot of choices. I think we need to signal we're going to do everything possible. To me, this is everything possible that we can do to try to help some projects go ahead. So hope you can support.
All right. That was Counselor Platt's close. A call to question?
Counselor O'Connor in favor?
Bressi opposed?
Platt in favor?
And that carries 6 to 1. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, isn't in camera items, so I'll look to my colleague Counselor O'Connor to make a motion.
Yes, I will move we go in camera. Thank you.
Give that motion. A call to question?
Counselor O'Connor in favor?
And we won't, for those who might be watching online, we won't be coming out of camera, so we'll see you another time.